Please Chaplain Art Mavrody here to lead us in both. Please stand.
Let us bow our heads. Almighty God, I lift up all who are in elected office and pray that you would protect them and give them wisdom, knowledge, and acute discernment for the office they hold. I lift up our military and first responders and pray for their protection, both on and off duty. Establish their steps, Lord. Strengthen them and equip them for the many important decisions that must be made today, and bless their families. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
There are no proclamations or recognitions for today, so we will move into public comment. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz's, begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Do we have individuals in the audience today who would like to offer public comment? If so, please come forward.
Hello. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. Monica Ramos, Assistant Director of Downtown San Angelo Inc. We would like to thank the City of San Angelo for sponsoring our Star Spangled Banner Concert and Fireworks event. This event was a huge show. We've already received an outpour of positive feedback about the fireworks display. It was a wonderful thing to see so many people, thousands of people within the River Stage and in proximity for this event. We were also pleased to have the presence of special guest Congressman August Fluger to pay tribute to first responders at our event. And we'd also like to thank the AEP Texas Foundation, city staff, volunteers, volunteer groups, our partnering organizations like the Lions Club and the San Angelo Hispanic Heritage Museum, and anyone else involved in helping make this event a success. We really look forward to hosting another spectacular event next year, so thank you again very much.
Thank you, Monica. Further public comment?
My name is Tony Jones. Current address is on Green Meadow, Single Member District Four. The statement of concern that I would like to express this morning has to do with future development in San Angelo, Texas, residential primarily. In the past couple of years, the development community and the city have worked together in designing and implementing stormwater ponds, retention ponds in new subdivisions. I put, I think, the first two in and elicited early on an agreement from the city that they would take ownership of these two ponds. The original stormwater manual was written in 2011, and it stated that the city would take ownership of these ponds and utilize them as a public utility, if you will, for the entire city of San Angelo in order to help keep the water clean. So, I built, I think, the first two ponds. The city agreed to take them. They were built to the city's design, and so I really have no further, I have no further concern personally for myself because the developable land that I still own will be serviced by the two ponds I've already put in, so I'm done with these stormwater ponds. But currently, staff is looking at over 100 lots, maybe closer to 200 lots, residential lots, that will go into the city of San Angelo and provide tax income ad nauseam in perpetuity. And so, staff has declared, along with legal, that the city really does not have to take ownership of these ponds. We're required to put them in. By the way, each of those ponds cost me personally about $400,000. So, these new lots that are being developed, that are going to go into San Angelo in these new subdivisions elsewhere, doesn't have anything to do with me, are going to require these developers, if the city does not take ownership of them, they're going to require these developers to own those ponds in perpetuity. And so, the result of that will be primarily for developers that have the wherewithal to understand what that means, is they will be required to set up homeowners' associations and require people to pay monthly into an association to take care of that pond. So, I would just ask you in the future to be aware of this and consider this. I don't know how well homeowners' associations are going to go over in Lakeview, America, Grape Creek, anywhere in the ETJ. You know, we've been fighting for years, affordable homeownership, and now we're faced with having to primarily, in the city of San Angelo, create homeowner associations to pay for these ponds if the city does not take them. And the pond that I built in southwest San Angelo is for the benefit of everybody in Tom Green County, according to the city. It helps our insurance rates because the water's cleaner and TCEQ's not banging on us, so that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Further public comment? Seeing none, we will move on into the agenda. Before we open up and ask council members if they want to pull anything from the consent agenda, I am going to say that I want to table the whole conversation on STRs today. We will not be dealing with that line item on the agenda, so if you're here to comment or be a part of the conversation on STRs today, it will not be discussed. With that, we will move into the consent agenda. I'm going to start and see if anybody wants to pull. Larry? Karen?
No, ma'am.
Lucy?
No, ma'am.
I'd like to pull Item D and E. Tom?
Nothing to pull.
Tommy?
No, ma'am.
Okay, with that, may I have?
Harry's online.
Harry, do you have anything you want to pull from the consent agenda?
No, ma'am. I'm good.
Okay, thank you. With that, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Tom.
Second.
Seconded by Lucy. Public comment concerning the agenda items? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thanks, Harry. Motion is approved, seven to zero. We will move into Item D, Consider Ratifying a Lease Agreement Between the City of San Angelo's Development Corporation and Career's GPS LLC, and Authorizing the Board President or the Designee to Execute All Necessary Documents.
Morning.
Michael, I really just want you to talk about what this is publicly.
I'm sorry, we had a, so, I think we had a problem with some of the supporting documentation, so I apologize for that. These are both, D and E are both incubator clients that we're proposing to lease space to, in the BRC, and so that's.
Can you tell me about them? What do they do?
No, I wasn't prepared to talk about what it is they do.
I hate to approve something I know nothing about.
I understand. These are small clients going in, taking a small footprint in the incubator, and we're trying to assist them with their efforts to develop their business, and so I don't have background on each of these companies.
Michael, when these.
Go ahead, Tom.
When these things go in, typically, how long are they in there? I mean, are they in there just as a stepping stone to go on to it further?
Yes, sir. They occupy space at favorable rates, and we.
Companies have been in there many years.
And the idea is that this becomes a stepping stone, and they move on.
Michael, aren't they?
Tommy, go ahead.
Aren't they limited to three years by terms of the lease that that's the maximum?
Ends on the lease, yeah.
Maximum they can stay is three years?
Yes, sir. I believe that's the case.
They can graduate sooner if they, you know, if, which the hope is to get their business up and running and be able to then afford a space on their own.
Yes, sir. The idea is to give them a safe place at low rates to kind of stimulate that activity, become stable, and then move on to market rate-type activities in the market.
One that I can think of specifically that was, that has now purchased a building in San Angelo's Centurion Planning and Design, they were in there for maybe a couple of years, so, you know, it, in my opinion, it's a worthy, a worthy investment on our part to make that space available to them.
I'm not questioning the worthiness of it. I'm questioning and just would like to be informed about what this, these new businesses are because, obviously, we think that they could be good. I just kind of like to know who they are and what they are about.
That is my fault. We had a busy week, and I didn't get the documentation on this in my hands, so I apologize. And if we need to table, then that's what we need to do.
I don't want to hold up the process necessarily, but again, I can't vote for something I don't know anything about. Yes, go ahead, Tina.
So it's in the packet, the back?
It's in the, that's from the COSA DC meeting.
Oh, yeah, that was the problem. It made it into their packet, but not ours.
Okay.
Reading from the COSA DC packet, Career GPS LLC is owned and operated by Vicki Terrell. Ms. Terrell is a career coach and trainer and leadership coach. She is dedicated to helping businesses create business environment that is profitable and purposeful. She provides training and group training sessions, one-on-one training and group training We see Vicki around regularly. She's very nice to work with and a contributor in the BRC. Is Vicki the one that's here? Okay. Watson Wood Law, P L C L C, is operated by Whitney Watson Wood. She is seeking admission to the incubator program to establish a new law firm in San Angelo. She will be leasing an office suite where she will help her clients with legacy and estate planning, directive to physician probate, preparing wills, trusts, durable power of attorney, medical power of attorney, and corporate law. And I believe she's here.
She is, and we know her from her work at SA ISD, so she's been here multiple times representing our school district, so we know her and are excited for this opportunity for you, Whitney. Thank you. Thank you for the update. We just need to know.
Thank you. I'm sorry for the stumbling.
We got it. Okay. With that, may I have a motion to approve Item D and Item E?
So moved, Mayor.
So moved by Tommy.
Second.
Seconded by Lucy. Anyone in the audience who would like to make comment on Items D or E? Whitney, you may come forward.
Whitney Watson Wood with Watson Wood Law, P L L C. I just want to say thank you for offering this kind of opportunity to help support small businesses. When you're looking at opening a small business and being an entrepreneur, the idea of operational costs and all of those things going into it can be intimidating, and it is wonderful to have a resource like this, and I have to say thank you to Ms. Desiree Johnson and her entire team for kind of walking me through some of those steps. And as a former member of San Angelo ISD too, I also want to say that I see these opportunities for some of our children that are entrepreneurs too, like what a great resource. So I want to say thank you, and I'm looking forward to it and appreciate it, and also looking forward to see what other things come from it too, from other entrepreneurs in our community, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, let's take a vote. All those in favor of approving Items D and E?
Aye.
Harry, how would you like to vote?
Yes.
With that, we have a seven-zero vote to approve Items D and Item E. We will now move into our regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. We will start with Item A, Consider Approving ADA Policies Related to Service Animals, Reasonable Modifications, and Contractors and Licensing. Teresa?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Teresa James, City Attorney, but in this role also the ADA Coordinator. These policies come from the work of the ADA Advisory Committee that has been created. I think it's important to not only have legislation that requires us to do certain things related to the ADA, but also to incorporate policies into our own system to help promote and sustain that culture of accommodation that really the legislation is intended to have. So these policies have been, they were drafted by me initially based on a number of the trainings and the different policies that I've reviewed, and then reviewed by the committee who offered suggestions and changes. We do have Sharon Troy here, who is a member of the committee, so I would welcome her to make any comments as she sees necessary, and I appreciate you being here, Sharon. So again, the purpose of these policies, it does align with the ADA training that our staff has been receiving. We've trained over 300 of our staff members, our frontline employees. Most of our directors are still a few that are out there that missed the first training that will have to come to another training. All of our fourth-floor administration has been trained, and then all of our managers. So we really are making big strides in training, making sure everybody's on the same page related to the responsibilities we have. These policies also help ensure compliance as staff changes. There's a lot of training that you take whenever you're a new employee at the City of San Angelo. One of the things you do receive, though, is a policy handbook, and we want these policies to be something that people not only would receive training on formally, but that they could review on their own so that they know what is expected of them. And it also creates clear processes related to responses to requests. So we want our citizens and our employees to know if there is a problem, what is the process that we're going to go through to fix that problem for them. So I want to go through these policies specifically partly because I'm a teacher at heart, and I want everybody to, who's watching this, to understand what our responsibility is, as well as theirs in some cases. But for service animals, individuals with disabilities may be accompanied by service animals any place the general public may go. That includes places where health codes might otherwise prohibit animals from being. Service animals are still allowed in those spaces. There are no identification or special tags that we will require. We do know some service animals do have vests and other forms of identification. That is completely discretion of the owner of that animal, and it's not something that is required or that we can require. And we can ask that disruptive service animals be removed, and if there's a question as to whether or not an animal is a service animal versus, for instance, a comfort animal, these are the only two questions that we can ask, and our staff has been trained. These are the two things you can ask to determine whether or not this is a service animal. The first, is the animal a service animal required because of a disability? And second, what work or task has the animal been trained to perform? We can't ask them to demonstrate the skill. We can't ask them, what is your disability? We can just ask the question, what kind of work do they perform for you? Second policy is a reasonable accommodation policy. I think, as most of our staff knows now, that we do have an obligation to make reasonable accommodations if we are requested to do so, and if we have, you know, we're within the parameters that we are required to do so. So this policy will help ensure staff knows of that requirement. Per the policy, directors have the authority to deny a request if the request fundamentally alters the nature of the service program or activity. I wanted to make sure that it was a director who had that authority and not every single employee to maintain some consistency. Managers or directors have the authority to deny a request if there's a legitimate safety concern, and the reason managers are added to this portion of the policy is these things often come up in the middle of a program where a director may not be available, but a manager is more readily available. So if there's a safety concern being raised by any accommodation we grant, we can deny the request for the accommodation at that time. Any denial does need to be in writing, and the person shall be directed to cxtx.us/ada webpage or to myself as the ADA Coordinator, so they have information about filing a grievance. The reason it needs to be in writing is there are statutory deadlines as far as filing a complaint with the Department of Justice, as well as a deadline within our own policy, our grievance policy, as to when they need to file those grievances, so we want to make sure everybody's clear on when that time clock starts. And then the third policy I want to get your approval on today is one that deals with contractors and licensing. This one really is predominantly for the purchasing department to ensure that we make sure our process for purchasing doesn't discriminate in any way, and that anybody that we select in accordance with a contract doesn't have any policies that are discriminating against people for the activities they're performing on our behalf. And also, it addresses a little bit that we're not going to operate any licensing program or create a program or activity rules that discriminate. One thing during the training I'm asking people to do is really pay attention to the rules that we have in place for programs, and to make sure, one, that they're necessary because a lot of our rules were written, like I was in high school, which is a long time ago, and, second, some of them do have this added effect of, like, causing some forms of discrimination that really aren't intended or necessary. So we are evaluating that on a day-to-day basis, but again, I did want to put it into this policy. There will be other policies that are coming. We're just not quite ready to have those to you. One is communications policy, so we're really evaluating the kinds of communications accommodations, one, that the community is asking us for, and two, that we have the ability to provide. So that one should be coming, as well as the committee's going to be asked to relook at our grievance process to make sure that that's not too cumbersome, that all those steps are necessary, and that it complies with the federal statutes. So I'll be happy to answer any questions about that.
Do I have questions or comments from City Council? Larry? Karen?
No, ma'am.
Lucy?
No, ma'am.
Tom? Yes.
So Teresa, just, someone go into a situation I saw just last week, and this goes into the ticketing and back to the ADA, some of the very first things. If you, if a person buys a handicap seat or something, another under ADA, they turn around, and they sell those seats. They can sell those to somebody who's not handicapped, but that does take up and fill space. I saw it just last week where six people were sitting somewhere, five of them had no need to be in there. One of them did, but they, when they got questioned, they got those tickets from, was sold to them under, from somebody that had bought them under an ADA situation. So I see that happen, and I see how that could be abused quite a bit. Also, saw a couple pets last week in Santa Fe, and they were had on the service dog. They were pups, Labrador pups, which is great, you know, so everybody wanted to go pet them, and I said, okay, so, you know, you're training them or something. They're, yeah, well, we're not for sure if they're going to be that. So, you know, my question is, at times, we know the questions we can ask. We're going to need somebody to go to when we have to validate, and it's going to be, there'll be onsite concerts, whatever that may be, so as you go through and you make these, fixing to say, rules, regulations, guidelines, we're going to need a, I would say, a hotline phone number, somebody calling. If that's you, I get it, but I was just going to say, there's some things that are really a gray area here that can be abused from either side of the fence.
Yeah, I think we've had some conversations about the ticketing guidelines from the Department of Justice within our committee, and I do have similar concerns that there's lots of opportunity for abuse of those new rules. You are supposed to provide companion tickets when you provide a seat, so sometimes that's who's taking up those other seats, or people who are companions to the person. As far as the service animals are concerned, and people come to me frequently now asking those kinds of questions. You know, there's a case where a person brings their dog out to the ball fields, and they say it's a service animal, but the dog doesn't seem to do anything but play fetch with the person. So, again, having, making sure they're asking those questions and ensuring that we're not violating anybody's rights to privacy or any of those things when we're trying to ascertain those things, but I am available and have answered a number of questions in that regard.
The question is, how does one get the packet, the paperwork, the whatever the animal wears that says they're a service dog?
There's no required training, and there's no required certification. I can train my own animal to provide a service for myself, and that dog would constitute a service animal. As long as it's trained to provide something that's related to a disability that I have, it qualifies as a service animal.
But there's no proof that, in fact, it is a service animal, or that that animal is in service to someone who needs that support?
I don't think we really have a problem with too many people trying to hold out their pets as being service animals. A lot of them are just like, it's just my dog, and I'm just wanting to bring it here. We have some people who bring little dogs into, like, the annex when they're paying their bills, and if they're holding them in their arms and they're not causing disruption, you know, staff just pretty much deals with the person and lets them go on. But yeah, it, there is no certification program. We can't ask them for any kind of identification. That is clearly written in the law.
With that, further questions? Yes, Tommy?
Teresa, I was looking at the city webpage. I noticed as the, on the landing page, it scrolls through there, and there is clearly a place on there to do something with respect to ADA. My question is, I wonder if we should have a permanent button. There's, looks like some, these buttons to the right are permanent buttons that don't rotate, that we need to have specifically for ADA questions.
That leads to our grievance page. Brian and I are looking at different ways we can make that page more accessible. He did create that short link. I think those buttons are set at the site, and maybe he can come out and explain that a little better. But the thing that we're working on really with our website, and I had lunch with the folks at Lighthouse, who were fabulous. If you haven't been out there to see what they do and talk to them, you should go because it's really fantastic. And we just asked them, talk to us about what you guys need. You know, we talked about Braille, and they're not interested in Braille. They consider that kind of an antique language, but they are really interested in making sure that our homepage is easily, easily accessible by a webpage reader, and Brian's been working, and Laurel and I have been working really hard on that, so I'll let him address those questions.
Morning. So to address your question, all of the icons and everything on the desktop homepage, we are locked into. We have an older website with a new vendor, and so a lot of that stuff cannot be interchanged at without redoing the entire website. We do have an ADA link under the Popular tab. If you're on a mobile device, ADA is the first button on those. We do have control of those, but when it comes to changing out some of those permanent buttons that are on the homepage, we don't have the capability at this time to do that, so.
But it is on the iPhone, I mean, on their phones, so it's immediate.
Yes, it is, yes. Yes, ma'am.
Further questions? Comments?
What was that? Excuse me? Name again?
Brian Groves, Communications Director.
Talking to the mic.
Yeah.
I have that coming, yeah.
Thank you for helping me out on that.
Had to get even there. What district is he in? Okay.
Okay.
Waited for that for five years, okay?
You got it today. All right, with that, then, may I have a motion for approving Item A in the ADA policies as presented today?
Motion made.
So moved, I think, by Tom, and then that must be seconded by Tommy.
I think Larry.
Or Larry, okay.
Go ahead and give it to Larry, and I'll second it.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. And thank you. With that, public comment. Seeing none, hearing none, we will take a vote on Item A. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Harry? I saw the lips move, and I think it was a yes.
I think I heard it.
Yes, so that.
Aye.
Thank you. That is a seven-zero approval. We will now move into Item B, which is Discussion of Short-Term Rentals, which is the item that I announced earlier. We are pulling from the agenda, not having a discussion today, and I repeat that because there's so many cities who've tried to create a new ordinance, which has resulted in multiple lawsuits, so at this point, we want to just stick with where we're at, and we will at some point address the short-term rentals ordinance. Item C is Consider Approving a Proposal to Allocate the 2023 CDBG and Home Grant Funds for Programs and Projects, and Authorizing the City Manager to Negotiate and Execute the Applications Required, Certifications, Related Documents, and Annual Funding Agreement for the Approximate Allocation of $660,142 of CDBG and $313,168 Home Grant Funds. Bob, you are on.
Good morning, Council. Our project proposals follow our five-year plan, which includes five key objectives and corresponding goals. They are providing decent housing, increasing homeownership, revitalizing deteriorated neighborhoods, increasing the affordable housing stock, and assisting special needs citizens. So every, all our proposals, all our goals and objectives are met by these, by this proposal, okay?
Just to make sure, when we say 125 homes, we're talking about over the five-year window, we're not talking about an annual number?
That is correct. For example, our goal is 125. We have five years to do that. We have 121 so far, so we're going to exceed that goal. There's a few that are still pending, and we hope to meet that goal. There's a few that are still pending, and we hope to meet that goal in the next two Here's a look at our funding trend. You can see that our funding has been relatively stable for the last five years. However, we will see a slight decrease in both CDBG and home grants. We're going to see a five, seven thousand decrease in CDBG, and a $32,000 decrease in home grants.
And that is because?
Well, that's basically the federal government, they decide on what the allocation is going to be, and that's basically just the federal budget, the president's budget is what happens. And it trickles down to us, and that's how, that's how we come up with our numbers. So, we have no control of that, unfortunately. Here's our proposal for our home funds. We're asking for $31,317 for administration, $80,851 for first-time home buyers' down payment assistance, $50,000 for MHR special needs tenant-based rental assistance, and $151,000 for new home construction through our CHODO, who happens to be Galilee CDC.
Can you walk through, go back, please? Can you walk through the Galilee CDC issue of the drop in total dollars? It's basically where the biggest drop is.
That is a huge drop. That's because last year, we actually had some access funds from previous years, and we allocated those funds for that. The 151 is more appropriate based on the allocation we got this year.
So, that would be a more historic dollar amount?
That's correct. For CDBG funds, we're asking for $132,028 for general grant administration, $115,517 for rehab admin program delivery, $127,000 for minor repairs, $110,000 for emergency housing repairs, and $130,597 for debt payment for the Section 108 loan, which happens to, which paid for the producer's park and the renovation of Real Vista Park.
And I always ask you, when is that paid up?
23rd August, 2030. So, we're getting there.
Thank you, note that date.
I was going to say, he said that one before.
I ask it every year.
Yeah.
Just to remind counsel, we use, we used to provide a lot of social services, we won't be able to do that. We didn't do that because of the Section 108 loan. We'll be able to reengage in future years, once we get that money back.
2030. Yes, Lucy, please.
Can you give us an example of the housing rehab administrat, what does that entail?
Sorry, again, ma'am?
On the housing rehab administration and the housing rehab program?
Yes, we, we use, we're allowed to take a certain amount of money from our certain lines for administration. One is general administration, which is based on 20% of the grant. The other one is program delivery. The cost of having someone manage that program, go out and do inspections, do the specs, which is the big one for us, by the way. We have a construction manager that does that for us, Steve Diaz, very good at it, and that's what he does. That helps pay for his salary and some of the things that we do, equipment and that kind of thing, to deliver the services for these programs.
When you look at the total cost of administration, the 132,000 plus 115, it really comes to almost 30% of the total number. That would seem to be a high number.
It is high, but we have to try to get as much grant funds to pay for administration, otherwise it comes from general funds, and we don't, we surely don't want to do that. But remember this, too, that we have a lot of other programs that this, that the staff carries on that doesn't pay administration, so we have, we have to cover that, that admin somehow, and that's how we do it.
And that, explain that to me again?
What I'm saying is, for example, we have 132,000 for administration. We have indigent cremation that, that we have to cover, that we have to take action on and manage that program. There's no administration for that. So, we have to somehow cover the administration for those activities. So, this helps to do that. Otherwise, it comes from general funds. We certainly don't want to do that.
Lucy, go ahead.
So, is this through the five-year period, or just every, or is this the one time, every year?
This, this, yeah, this year's just for one year. Like I said, the five-year plan provides you the guideline, if you will, for how you're going to expend those funds for those five years. And we can change that whenever you need to, it's up to the council. We have to go and get a, ask permission from HUD to get, to do an amendment if we need to change the, any of these goals and objectives. But the admin is set based on the percentage. The 132 is based on 20% of the, of the grant, and then HUD, home funds, they, they cap it at 10%, so that's where, that's where we're set at. And it's, they're just, we got to pay staff, we got to buy equipment, we got to buy a new truck, we have to do those kind of things. So, it is high, ma'am, you're right.
Well, and I, and I bring it up, and we talk about it, because in fact, obviously, this is a program to really help people in need, and it certainly takes away from the actual cost of, or the monies available to do the repairs. So, on the other hand, you can't do the repairs if you don't have the staff. So, it's the egg before the hen, the hen before the egg, or whatever that cliche is, but they're, anyway, it's high.
We would take a general, from the general fund, if you're interested, we'd be glad to take it, and increase the numbers on the number of houses we do so. Anyway, it's, it's a tough situation, you're right. And it's not just us, it's everybody else, you know? Here, by the way, here are some of the-
One second, hold on a sec, I didn't see Karen raise her hand.
Bob, can you just expand for my edification, the final line item, code compliance?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Do you have a dedicated employee? How, how does that work?
So, we do, we have a dedicated employee that, that, that they spend their time specifically on the target neighborhoods to ensure that we help maintain those property, the property maintenance. It's one of the, one of the eligible activities that we've decided to take on years back. We've been doing this for about 15 years or so. Otherwise, again, it'd be nothing, they, it's just to ensure that we have someone that can respond to our requirements quickly, and they can kind of focus their efforts in those areas to help, you know, keep, maintain those neighborhoods.
One person?
That's not a person.
It's, it's, it pays for one person, but basically, we, what we do is-
So, that's up there on salaries, too, then?
Actually, it does not. It's actually, it pays for, it does pay for their salary, but not for administration. It's strictly for that code officer. It's a cross-department pay.
Yeah, that code officer would obviously be doing things other than this job.
That is correct.
So, it's a broader code compliance person who has other responsibilities in terms of code enforcement.
Well, he does, well, he, basically, what, the way we do it is, we, we put our officers in sectors, and one officer is in a sector that strictly is a CDBG area, and that's what he focuses on. He does not leave that area. That's all he does. He does his, he does his routine, so, and he's plenty busy, obviously. It's in our areas that we, that are deteriorating neighborhoods, so, that's what that is.
Thank you. Ma'am? Yes, go ahead, Larry.
Is that service on demand, or is it a rover?
Sorry, sir.
Is, is that code compliance on demand? For instance, a call by a complainant, or is that a person roving, looking for non-compliance?
He actually does both. Well, he responds to complaints, and he also does patrols in the area, yes.
Any other questions on this page? Okay.
And like I mentioned, we do do other projects. We have indigent cremation, we have homeless emergency sheltering, we provide a rapid rehousing program. We provide rental assistance through ARP, the, some money that was allocated-
Do you have dollar amounts for each one of these categories that we spend?
Oh, wow. Wasn't quite ready for that.
I assume it's coded, so, because, would think it would be coded so that you would have an annual number that says, "Okay, last year, our indigent cremation dollars were X, this year, we..." I mean, I would, some of those things, I think we'd be very interested in understanding historically what the dollars associated with those are.
Indigent cremation is about $25,000. Homeless emergency sheltering, that came from during Storm Uri, and it comes carried on after that. That averages about $10,000 or so, 10 to 15. Continuum of care is 180,000.
Explain that one, because that's a big number, 180,000.
That's a, that's a grant that came in, and we oversee the, the grant, myself and one of my staff members, and the housing authority actually carries out the activity itself. Well, we do, we provide some oversight management of that, of that grant. In fact, we just finished a, an audit from that, from the HUD staff, yes.
Public housing authority.
ARP is the fund that we got through the American Rescue Plan, and it's about 400,000 for about five years.
400 over five years?
About five years, yes, ma'am. We should be done by five years. We'll go through that program by then. Although it extends, it extends for another couple of years, but we should be done in five years. Atmos weatherization is a grant that we get every year. It runs for anywhere from 15 to 25,000. We have one staff member that kind of handles that for us. Infill housing is 200,000, that, that's counsel approved a couple of years back. And then the other one is the royalties, is about, that changes depending on how much, how many policies they sell, and I think we've gotten anywhere, I think the high is about 30,000, and the low is about 15,000. So, it changes every year depending on how many policies they've sold. And that royalty fund we use for our emergency repair, it combines, so, for example, we go to a, respond to a situation where someone needs an ADA bathroom, but their sewer line is broken, we can use some of this money for the sewer line, and it allows us more money for the ADA bathroom. That's how we, that's how we leverage those funds. So, we do these things in addition to the, our CDBG and home grant funds.
You know, it's been a while since we've had a presentation on the service line warranties, and I think at some point, we ought to go back out and publicly talk about that program.
Actually, I just got, about last month, I believe, I got an update on that. So, I could come to council, maybe next council agenda, I can tell you what they've done so far, and what we've, what we've used those funds for, so.
Are there two different service line programs, or am I, am I dreaming that we get, I get things in the mail from, from time to time, and they're, they're two different, I guess, lines, or?
Well, there's actually several companies that do this. We work with Service Line Warranties of America, of course. We sponsor them, is what we do. And they, they provide the royalty every year. There's another company that also does the same thing, but they're now affiliated with the city. We don't, we don't sponsor them, we only sponsor one.
We need that presentation because the citizens don't understand multiple people doing it, and the one originally presented was obviously from the city. We just need a presentation on that, and we need to update the citizens on why it is, what it means, what it can do, what it doesn't do, et cetera.
And then, by the way, they did meet the million-dollar policy mark this year, so.
Lucy?
Hey, Bob, on the ARP rent, rent assistance, how much money was allocated for that, or how much have you put out, or how much money have you helped people with?
Sure. Actually, we started this year. We, it's actually two main programs. One is to end veteran homelessness, as you remember, be coming to you to several months back. That, that's about 600,000, $1,000 for renovation of a facility and case management for our veterans. And once we get that done, we, I think we just gave them the notice to proceed, they should be done by Christmas, hopefully, and we'll just start seeing that next, next winter, start seeing folks getting the, getting the case management, getting them into the place, and then, at that point, we can go to, we can actually come, we can petition to be recognized as a city that ended veteran homelessness, and that's kind of our goal, a long-term goal. And the other, and then the ARP rental assistance, that's 400,000 that the staff is managing. So, we had a million, over a million dollars total, and that's how we split it up.
Were there questions on this page? Okay, move on.
Well, basically, that's it. If approved, we will, we'll take this and craft our annual action plan, which will come to you next council through the consent agenda, and then it goes forwarded to HUD for their approval. That's how it works.
All right, so we just need the update that I requested on the warranties, and that doesn't obviously, that doesn't mean we can't approve this on the next consent agenda, but I want to make sure we don't forget to make that part of a future agenda.
I will do that, I will do that next, ma'am.
The citizens need that.
Yes, ma'am.
They need to know the difference between the multiple companies, and exactly what that warranty, if you purchase it, means.
Certainly. Got you.
All right, so with that, may I have a motion for approval?
Sure, ma'am.
Tommy made the motion.
Second.
Second by Karen. Okay. And with that public comment, seeing none, we'll take a vote. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion is approved, seven-zero. Our next item is item D, consider a resolution supporting the Friends of Fairmont Cemetery's fundraising efforts to replace the fence and make landscape improvements at Fairmont Cemetery along the northern Boundary Avenue and frontage. Carl?
Good morning. Carl White, Parks and Recreation. We're asking council to adopt a resolution that would support Friends of Fairmont's fundraising efforts to do some landscape improvements along Avenue N, the northern frontage of the cemetery. The winter storm from a couple of winters ago killed a bunch of the shrubs, and that started the discussion about doing some improvements, visual improvements along that frontage. The boards had discussed this at a couple of meetings, and I think a committee meeting or two, so they wanted to move forward with some fundraising with the help of Friends of Fairmount. We think the project will cost about a quarter million. The project would include replacing the entire fence, except the entrance, matching the fence to match the entrance fencing, which is an ornamental black tubing fencing. And they haven't quite decided what to do with the space between the fence and the curb. Could either raise the curb and level out the, the grounds, similar to what Calvary Cemetery's done adjacent to Fairmont Cemetery. And one thought is to move the fence from its current location behind the live oak trees. There's about 18 live oak trees that, Front Avenue End, and if we ever to put a walkway along Avenue N, you could actually go into the cemetery through a, a gate on level ground, so you could continue some pedestrian access along that way. So, we're asking council to adopt this resolution to let them do some fundraising. Part of this resolution does let Friends of Fairmount receive the old fencing and try to sell that for, to make some money. There's, there's some old chain link fencing there, which doesn't have much value, but there is an older fence, which is 60 to 80 years old, and it's, it's kind of unique, but the city doesn't have any use for it, but it could raise some money.
Does that mean removing the shrubs?
We've already removed several of the shrubs. We haven't quite decided which ones to leave. There are some nice roses that are still there that we'll likely keep, but the board hasn't quite decided about what shrubs to keep.
This is really just talking about the fence itself, not the landscape that's right next to the fence, meaning the shrubs.
This would be, the, the project's entirely including the fence and some landscape improvements, but they haven't quite decided what the landscape improvements would be.
As they're doing that, most of them are that old eonimus-type hedge, and it's dead. So, there are pieces of it that are still alive here and there, but yeah, as they took that fence out, those shrubs would go out.
All right, so questions for Carl? Input? All right, so with that, may I have a motion to approve a resolution made by Larry, seconded by, by Karen? Public comment concerning this item? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor of approving the resolution, please say aye.
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 Motion is approved, seven-zero. We will move on to item E, which is consider a resolution supporting the private fundraising efforts to replace the modular skate park equipment at Bart DeWitt Park. Carl, again, you're on.
This is a similar item, allow us, private sector to do some fundraising to replace some equipment at the skate park. Quick orientation, we call it the Downtown Skate Park, it's on the southwest side of downtown, along the river, between Irving Street and Randolph Street by the YMCA. This was the city's first-
It used a lot? Let me just ask the question, are people still using that park, that skate park?
Yes. And I think we have one or, a few folks here from the group that want to do the fundraising that could speak to that. This is the city's first skate park dating back to 2012. This is the city's first skate park dating back to 2003. The cost was $68,000, and that included the module equipment, the fencing, the concrete work, and the signs. An interesting note is that the funding came from the sale of the old Nef's amusement park train. Mayor JW.
Wish we still had that train, you know?
You wish we had it?
People constantly ask where that train went.
They do. They do. Mayor JW Lawn is very instrumental in making that happen 20 years ago.
Who bought it?
I don't remember. I think they were from out of town. The equipment has required maintenance over the years, but we kept it usable and safe, but it is nearing the end of its life. Quick look at the equipment. From a distance, it looks pretty good. It's been kept up, but you see it's seen significant wear, especially close up. Being loved to death. So the local advocates are willing to raise the funding. We anticipate the cost to be up towards $120, $120,000, could be less. There would be additional site improvements, including some additional concrete work, drinking fountain, and some benches. Just a quick look. They are interested in concreting over this where we kept it, grass. And the city staff could help with installing the new equipment and doing some of the improvements that I mentioned. And the increased cost for maintenance, once everything's done, is only about $2,000 annually, so not much. And I think Mr. Little's here. He may want to speak about the improvements.
Just come forward.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. I'm here with the council. My name is Kevin Little. I'm born and raised here in San Angelo. I'm a professional skater and also inline skate instructor. I actually met with the council here about 20 years ago when we were petitioning initially to get the skate park. And we appreciate the, you know, city doing what they could and providing us that skate park then. And to your question earlier about do members of the community still utilize the skate park, that answer is yes. You know, there's a very large skating community of inline skaters, skateboarders, scooter riders that do frequent that skate park on a regular basis. And being with the park's now 20 years old, due to the weathering and constant usage of the park, it has broken down over time. The pictures provided don't really go into full detail about some of the weathering and deterioration that shows on those ramps, but you know, seeing some of the people utilizing the skate park every day, the performance of the park is compromised by having some of these parks deteriorating, and they are past their expiration period. The actual manufacturer of the initial ramps have since actually gone out of business, and they're actually no longer manufacturing ramps. That's how old some of these are. So what we're trying to do is fundraise some of the necessary funds to replace some of these parts that are showing weathering, that are deteriorating. And, you know, the members of the local skating community have voiced their opinions on parts that they would like to replace them with. And we've been doing several grassroots organizational fundraising events to promote the skating events and draw attention to the need to have these replaced because the skating community is so vibrant within the community, and it does provide them a positive physical outlet for their time. And it gives them an alternative for some of these individuals that may not necessarily fit into a team sports activity and gives them a place to, you know, participate in, you know, skating in a safe and friendly, you know, community. And being that the Riverside Skate Park, it's in a very close proximity to other, you know, downtown features such as the YMCA, the BOSK, the art community, such as the, lots of things, downtown, the Kids Kingdom, the Art Museum, Art and Uncommons Places. There are so many things within a close proximity to that skate park that we feel that the renovations to the skate park are vital for that. We've held several events over the years that have brought lots of commerce to the city, and a lot of outside patrons have come in to participate in some of these skating events that we've held. And we're actually having one on Saturday, and, you know, we have several different communities of skaters coming all the way from Dallas and Houston, coming out here to participate in these events. So it does draw, you know, quite a bit of people that, you know, bring money to the restaurants and to the hotels and things like that. So, you know, we're doing everything we can, reaching out to members within the local community, such as, you know, City Lumber, McCoy's, West Texas Steel, to see if they would be able to donate, you know, construction materials to help us in, you know, renovating the skate park. We're doing, you know, T-shirt sales, car washes, you know, coin drives and things like that to try to raise what little funds we can. And also, reaching out to other nonprofit organizations like YMCA's, the Boys and Girls Clubs, Tony Hawk Foundations, and other similar individuals that give large donations to skate park renovations. And we're using pretty much every type of possible way that we can raise funds to, you know, renovate these parks. And we know the city's probably already allocated a good majority of their, you know, fundage for this year, but if there's any type of leftover, you know, money at the end of the year that y'all could possibly allocate to help us in renovating some of these, you know, park, you know, obstacles to keep us up and running on those parks and keep us safe, you know, it would be greatly appreciated, so.
Questions from council? Comments? Larry?
I'm not a skateboarder, so I'm basically ignorant.
Are you kidding?
It's Tommy Hebert.
I can still get you some. There's still time in the day.
There is at least one other skateboard park in town, is that correct?
Yes, sir. There's one over on Kirby Skate Park, over on 29th Street, which there is that skate park. And it is good that there is two different locations for the large, you know, skating community that we have in town. And that park is great, but it's not showing near the amount of deterioration that the Riverside Park has, unfortunately.
It's much newer than.
It's newer, and it's concrete, so it doesn't weather nearly as much as some of these metal prefabricated skate park pieces that break down over time and start showing warping because of the weathering and, you know, rust and things like that, so.
You think the two fulfill the need for the community? Specifically, I'm thinking about the southwest.
It can always, there's like such a huge community of skaters. I mean, there's been talks about even utilizing some of the other, you know, having a third park, you know, other areas of town because there's other communities that don't, because some of the local skaters are younger ages than, you know, 16 and younger, they have to commute to some of these skate parks. I remember when I was young, I had to skate, you know, three to four miles to get to the skate park to participate in practice. It was either that or skate some of the, you know, local businesses or abandoned buildings, and we know how people don't appreciate that. So that's kind of like, the more parks that we have available for skaters, makes it easier for them to participate, and then also prevents any type of abuse towards, you know, private businesses and things like that, or schools, so. Yeah, we could always have more. I would say that, so.
Be a temporary retention pond.
We could turn that retention pond into a skate park easily. Just give us some concrete, so.
I'm sure that would overwhelm.
Right. So I just, you know, just looking at all the equipment that's listed there, I don't see why you don't go and talk to every orthopedic surgeon in town in Shannon Hospital.
Actually, I'm in physical therapy right now, and I totally pitched that just yesterday.
If you need Dr. Beatty's number, we can get Dr. Beatty's number.
Yeah. I said, you know, this would be in your benefit to keep us up and running because it's just kind of adding towards your funds.
Of course, he makes money doing that, so.
Exactly. He should be a good sponsor.
Wise minds think alike.
He might want to put his name on there.
When you hit here, call here.
Yeah, there you go.
Other further questions or comments?
It's probably a question for Carl. I know you've been active with the park dedications that we've been talking about. I wondered if an additional skateboarding park is in the mix.
I would say if there's dollars, I'm not sure where you're going to find those dollars when we have tremendous amount of need just to maintain the existing parks in the state that they're in. Money is always tight, and we have lots of improvements with existing. Carl, but go ahead and add to that conversation.
Yes, that is true. When we were conceptualizing what Valley View Park could look like, we did not factor in a skate park, but that could be added back into that concept of what that park could be developed. That's, that's, it's close to your district. Is it in your district, Valley View?
No.
I think it is.
That's me.
It's in the southwest.
There might, we're sitting here, there might be some space there at Meta Creek Park if we wanted to add something. That would take away some field space, no doubt, but anyway.
But I'll bring it back to the fact that we don't have any money to do that, so.
We can dream all day, and it's nice too, but right now, we're dealing with fiscal responsibility. And right now, I'm not sure where that, if you're having to come and fundraise to get this one redone, I'm not sure where we think the money would come for a brand-new one, right? Because if we had the money, $120,000 right now, to do it ourselves, but we don't have. It's the reason we're going into fundraising.
Hence the resolution.
Thanks, the resolution.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, with that, may I have a motion for approving the resolution for the skate park?
So may.
Moved by Tommy.
Second.
Seconded by Larry. Public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion is approved, seven zero. Now, what I think we will do, because the next item F, I believe, is going to be a very long conversation, so I'm going to say, let's take a 10-minute break, and we'll come back and dive into the schedule of fees and charges. 5:00 AM, and we will move into Item F, which is consider a resolution amending the schedule of fees and charges, to amend charges for building and construction-related fees, business-related fees, fees for abatement of junk and impalement and sale of property, planning-related fees, cemetery fees, and facility use fees. So Tina, I think you're on with this presentation. We're going to start with code compliance.
Yes, I'll get it started introducing these fees. First off, we're going to look at removal of fees for abatement of junk. These are just services that are no longer offered.
And why is that?
I would have to ask the department director to answer that question. Bob Solis?
We get lots of emails and phone calls about junk, so it'd be interesting to understand the removal of it as a fee and as a service, I guess.
Okay, I'll just go through these real quick. Taking into account any personal property. I'll tell you what, I don't have the history behind this. I do have my supervisor here who has the history on these things. So Rudy, you want to come up here and see if you can shed some light on these?
I'm ready with code compliance. Since I've been here, we've never done any of these impalement and sale of properties. As far as the 37260 per six-yard dump truck, we don't have a six-yard dump truck. We do have a 12-yard dump trailer.
Do we just need to clean up the language on that one specifically? Instead of removing it, it needs to be cleaned up. Is that correct?
Well, these need to be specifically removed and then the other addressed through an amendment.
We just don't, okay. All right, keep going through them.
We do have on the next slide, the 12-yard dump truck.
Keep going through those, so go back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go line by line.
We've never provided these fees. I don't know where they came from, to tell you the truth. So we decided not to even deal with them. We don't need to have them in place. As far as the six-yard dump truck fee, we don't have a six-yard dump truck fee, so we just have a 12-yard dump trailer. So that's why we need to remove them, so that it's not confusing.
So like you said, Mayor, this is just cleaning up. These were previously in the ordinance, but these are services that, as far back as Rudy can remember, have never been provided, so therefore, we don't really need these fees in our fee resolution and fees.
Okay, so then the question would be, all right, so you're going to present, all right, just keep going.
So here's where we add in, the 12-yard dump truck, as well as limousine permit renewal and mowing services. The abatement can be charged on the full 12-yard dump truck or in a partial increment of 1/8. And then all mowing services will be at this new hourly rate. Previously, it was separated into two charges of $45 each.
So it went from $90 to 175?
Went from $45 to 175. There were two separate fees that were charged for two different types of services previously, is my understanding.
Yeah, that's my point. So there must have been two different $45 charges.
Correct.
So we're going from a total of combined $90 current fee to $175.
My understanding that it was previously two $45 fees for different types of services, so it is actually going from 45 to 175 and combining it into one fee rather than two separate fees for two different types of services. So mowing in general would be $175.
And that other service was what and is where?
I have, the two separate charges were small acreage and tractor mows previously. And I need more detail than that. I probably need to ask Rudy to come back up.
Well, so the $175, is it for any size of a lot? What are we looking at here?
So the mowing services is $45 an hour, whether it's tractor mow or just a regular small mow, which is a residential lot.
No matter what the size of the lot is?
That's exactly right. $45 an hour.
The bigger the lot, the better the value.
The tractor takes a little bit more work.
Well, that is an hourly rate, correct? So a bigger lot would take more time? Yes.
But then we need, okay, so it's not $175?
Per hour. Hourly rate.
It's not a flat fee, that's the point, it's hourly. So it's $175 an hour.
So like, if it was a bigger acreage lot, then it would take longer and therefore cost more.
Yes, please.
I think that's cheap. I really do, because my son mows, has 18 different yards, and there's people, there's builders that call him and say, I have you to mow this lot. And he does it, I would say, for what he does and the size of those, I do think that's fair, to what they would pay if they went out and actually got somebody to come, especially those yards, those large lots, they let them overgrow, and you end up spending, you have to come with a tractor, you end up spending probably two hours minimum by the time you get there and drive. So I have no problem with that mow, and I think that's fair, but my question is, if they don't pay that, how do you sign that? Do we put a lien on the property?
Well, the other issue is, okay, so if you look at it, it seems like this says, whatever it is, is 175, but we're saying it's per hour.
Per hour.
And that's not clear on this slide, that it's an hourly fee, not a dollar fee. That's what was my question. Yes.
So I will be the first one to say, I think that's a fair charge to it. I don't know how long we've been at this, what rate we've charged, but that's a historic rate, the 45, even if we charged it on two different things, so I have no problem with that one.
I do want to point out that we're not in the mowing service business either. This is only when people refuse to mow their lawns, and we're having to send people out there to do this. So again, we encourage our citizens, don't pay these rates. Please go out there and mow your lawns, take care of business, and we won't have to go out there and do this.
Or you're a local college student.
And you have that business card with you today, so.
We can turn it out or call Decker, either one. He has the number.
Yes, Lucy.
So Tina, what was the answer to that, as far as?
We do put a lien on the property if they don't pay. I will also say, on the mowing in particular, the cost of service is quite a bit higher at $475, so.
Say that again?
Excuse me. The calculated cost of service for the mowing was $475, so this is still quite a bit lower than even that, so.
Does some of that act as just a penalty, rather than just the expense of the mowing?
No, this is just the cost of service.
Yeah, we cannot include a penalty in these services. That would be not allowed. This has to be based solely on cost of service.
What's the timeframe between being, receiving something in the mail that says?
The way the process works, we go out and inspect, we provide them a seven-day period. We mail out a letter. We give them 10 days because of the mail service. Then they have seven days to abate. At that point, we will go back and re-inspect. If they need more time, they can ask for more time, and we will grant that. And ultimately, if they're not in compliance, we will put it on a list of abatement, and that may take some time, depending on how busy we are. It could be a day, it could be another week before we can get to it. So that's what we're talking about. And just to clarify a couple of things, too, on the impoundment fee, we don't impound, we basically take it to the dump. We don't keep anything. So that's just clarification.
So there's property on the property.
That's correct.
That was it for code compliance. I think we're going to do separate votes on each of these types of fee. That's how we have it written into the agenda. Is that correct?
Well, let me, so if that was all the fees, there certainly, are there not other fees in code compliance, other than those things that you just looked at?
Yes.
Or are we just leaving those code compliance fees the same as they are, so there's no change?
Yeah, they'll remain the same unless the department director or and or manager tells us that they see a need for a change. And so these are the only three that they've requested to change this go-around.
Okay.
Vote on this one?
We need a motion on, yes, a vote on the code compliance fees. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so may I have a motion for code compliance fee approval?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Seconded by Tommy. Public comment. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 No one opposed, that is approved, seven to zero. All right, we'll move on to the cemetery.
Yes, ma'am. Next up, it's my understanding that these have been reviewed and approved by the board, and I think Jeremy's here and ready to discuss what, you know, what they're proposing and go through all of these proposed changes with us.
Jeremy Walker, cemetery supervisor. We have our concrete boxes that we're trying to increase, also our concrete vaults and our outside container setting fee.
The question mark is, so based off the proposed fee, does that cover the cost? Because in the previous one, we talked about, we want to increase it, but it still doesn't meet the cost of that item or that service. So do these new fees cover the cost of the item?
Yes, ma'am. They do.
Okay. Questions for Jeremy?
I need some education. Go ahead.
Okay, Larry and then Tom.
You have a question on this?
I think Larry was first.
Larry was-
I wonder if he could explain, if he'd back up one. What is an outside container?
Place the casket inside a, it's going to, the outside container is going to be like a, it's called an econo vault that the cemetery provide, that the funeral homes provide, and we'll place the casket inside there. We actually have to do manual work to set the vault.
Thank you.
Tom?
You got it.
Okay. Lucy? Out of curiosity, do you need the concrete box of the concrete vault?
We require a container. You don't have to have a vault or a box, but then you would purchase a Wilbur vault from the funeral home.
Well, if you've never had to bury anyone, so that becomes, so the question mark is, do you need, the question is, the container, and then the box, and then the vault?
No. The box is going to be a flat box. The vault is going to be like a dome shape. The outside container is going to be something you purchase from the funeral home, but you have to have one of the three.
You don't have to have all three.
No, ma'am.
It's an option.
Correct.
Yeah. Any other questions or comment on this page? Okay, next page.
This is our opening-closing for our regular services. We're going from 1250 to 1550. This is the opening-closing for infant service, from 300 to 500. And this is the opening-closing of a stacking, where you put the casket on top of another casket. And this is from 1350 to 1650. And then the burial opening-closing of a cremation service is going from 500 to 700.
Questions for Jeremy on these items?
One question.
Yes, Tommy.
Jeremy, does that cover your cost of providing the service?
Sir.
Does the increase in those fees cover your cost of providing the service?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so maybe not.
So this, the opening and closing, the proposed fee is 1550. Cost of service is estimated at 1682. For the infant, proposing $500. Cost of service calculated at 1426. Stacking, proposing at 1650. Cost of service 1810. And then burial. Burial proposed at 700. Cost of service 3262.
Wow.
So I think when we discussed this the first time, councils ago, there was a question of the frequency that some of these, we actually go into like, and you hate to discuss these things, but like, the burial of an infant is not that common. Let's say there are some of these fees that, like, we look at that only happen a few times a year. Isn't that right, Jerry?
Correct. As far as the infant burials, we maybe have two, maybe three a year.
Right. Well, so the whole point in bringing these fees today, in my opinion, is we're trying to take these fees out of the general fund, you know, basically, and put them back into where they should be properly allocated across the board. It's unfortunate that we discuss cemetery fees at the same time, because it gets emotional across the board, but as we go forward with it, that's the stance I'm going to take, is trying to recoup some of these fees that all the citizens pay back to a specific site and light item. And when they bring these forward, Jeremy, I should say, I need to know what the true cost of it is, and what Tina brought forward versus what we're actually proposing here, just so we have an idea of how much gap we're still putting on the entire population.
Well, and I think the big issue, having heard those numbers, is the three items, the first three items, they're closer to actual cost, but the burial opening and closing, cremation one, is dramatically different than the actual cost. And so the question mark is, why are we not getting closer to the actual cost compared to the other three, which are not as dramatically different?
I think you don't want to outprice yourself. I mean, you can outprice yourself, and then you won't have any business. So you don't want to outprice yourself. I think these prices that, the fees that we have proposed, they're in comparison to the other cemeteries here in town, and they're right online. We're still behind, actually.
I know, that's why we're asking the questions. Yeah. And so, and again, and I say that relevant to, again, if you look at actual cost of service for the opening and closing of the regular, opening and closing of the infant, opening and closing of stacking, is closer to the actual cost. You get down to the burial opening and closing, the cremation. You said it was 3200?
3262.
And so that, I think, is our question, is the dramatic difference between cost of service and proposed fee. Question, comment?
From our perspective, yes, we were going off of what Jeremy recommended as far as market rates, and like he said, not pricing ourselves out of, you know, being competitive, I guess.
Mayor, if I may. Jeremy, the Fairmount Cemetery, the board when they met, they took all this into consideration. I know you have a competitive factor, as we understand that. We also look at the proposed fee and how much we actually should be charging based on the service cost. But at this point, you're just trying to make sure the discussion was had with the board, that you don't want to put yourself out of the competition, basically. Is that it?
Correct. I mean, we have the board here, they're in support of the fees that we have.
Can you tell us, like, on the burial opening and closing for cremation, what does that entail?
Us actually digging the grave and actually putting up the tent and also working the service.
So is this a standard-sized grave that you're digging as well?
No, sir. It's going to be a smaller grave. We can put three cremations on top of a grave.
So, but cremations don't always require burial, right? So a lot of cremations are not a, digging, I mean, creating-
Oh, yeah, some of them call them burial, I'm correct.
Yeah, so.
But these fees are, those fees are not on here.
Okay, so only-
These are in-ground burial.
I guess my question was, Mayor, why is it $3,200 for a-
That's the reason I keep asking the question. The dollar amount, we say, the cost of doing it seems large compared to if you're opening and closing a regular burial site for 1550, and the actual cost is 16-something. Why is the cremation one significantly lower when you're doing the same opening and closing that you do? And again, my ignorance, do not, I'm ignorant, okay, on that, but.
At times, we do have to use like our backhoe, and we do have to use our trucks, you know, and so I think that goes in.
You do on the other things, too, right?
Correct.
But typically, in this case, the lower fee for the cremation burial is because you have a smaller area that you're, you're not digging a big hole.
I know, but it sounds-
So that's the lower cost.
I know, but the problem is, what she said, the actual cost is 3200. That's the number that's confusing.
Is that correct?
That's why we're asking the question.
I don't know where that number's coming from.
Yes, Tommy.
Would it make it less confusing if we just had the very same fee for all those services? And some might be in excess, the fee might be in excess of our cost, or then some would still be short. Do we have good reason for having different, and I realize it's more this, more that, but is that the confusing part, that we've got different fees?
And you might, can you add anything to the, and Wes, can you add anything to our conversation that we're confused about?
Can you explain the 3200?
You might not, and it's okay if you don't, so don't feel obligated.
No, ma'am. I'm rolling.
Okay.
So the bulk of the cost of this service is the backhoe, the truck, and one other piece of equipment, so it's largely driven by the cost of using the equipment on this one.
Agreed. That, but that's the same thing you do for the opening and closing of the regular, right? And the opening and closing of a stacking, that's the confusion.
Correct, but it's a smaller hole that you're digging.
The question is, why is, you have $1,600 listed as the proposed fee for the opening and closing of a regular burial?
Correct.
Or a stacking. What is the actual cost of that? Is it actually $3,200? What she's getting at is, it should not be more expensive to do a cremation than it is to do a regular burial.
That's the confusion.
Grave opening, which you haven't seen yet, is also a cost of service of 3151, so it's driven by the cost of the equipment.
Okay, well, it's confusing that this is on this slide, when you have open and closing on this one, and you have it at 1550, and the burial opening and closing cremation is 700. If the next slide reflects that 3200, then that answers part of the question. It's just what's the difference then between this slide, open and closing regular, compared to what you're going to present on the next slide?
It's going to show, from what I heard Tina say, is that the actual cost for the opening and closing for a regular grave is $3,200 approximately. And since a cremation requires still digging in those fourth, it gets close. What these, the reason these are cheaper, for instance, the cremation, is because the market rate is much lower for cremation, so they're trying to stay within the market rate of what others charge. And yes, they're both low compared to what actual cost would be.
I know, but that, we, okay, we get. But if you tell us that the open and closing regular is 1550, and the actual cost of that is 16-something, you said, then what is the next slide in terms of what's the difference between this slide and that process versus the next process?
This 1550 is including also the tent, and so really, you would take the tent off, the $500 off of that, and that's what the original opening and closing would be on the regular.
Okay, but Tina just said that on the next slide, that service is also 30.
The grave opening. It's 3151.
Where I think we're really confused, because.
Are these additional to what we saw on the first slide?
Yes.
And the slides are not grouped in any specific order, they're just, you know, they fall out on whichever slide comes next.
Okay, so then you'll need to talk into the mic if, as we go forward. And, but then, okay, give us the actual cost of these versus the proposed fee.
Okay, so overtime on weekend, proposed at 500. Cost, 623. Overtime hourly, proposed at 250. Actual cost, 623.
Oh, that's not even on it. I think it's just overtime in general.
Grave opening, 3151. Proposed at 500.
See, that's the question there, is that grave opening, because when, on that other slide, we thought that would be inclusive of that, what that slide said that service was. It's our ignorance, I'm sure.
This grave opening here is for the weekend. Yep, just say a funeral home calls us, and they want to have a service on Monday, we have to open up the grave on Saturday. We're going to charge them a weekend charge for working on the weekend, then also the opening and closing, then also a grave opening for the weekend.
So the grave opening is inclusive in the other fee of 1550 from the previous slide?
Only on the weekend.
Yeah, that's where these slides are not clear, in that this should say grave opening, but only, this pertains only to overtime.
Weekend only.
When it's on a time when we're not open. The other one would pertain to the weekday, so yes, that's correct. It's not clear.
The grave opening is inclusive in the first slide's cost of service.
Yes.
So they would pay that 1550 plus $500 because of the weekend service.
Yes, correct.
So then that actual cost is, let's say, 2,000, or proposed fee is 2,000, compared to actual cost?
Correct.
Is what?
Are all of those items right there, weekend ones? Or is it just-
This is weekend here, yes.
All of that is?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, except for the tent setup and the additional tent. That's, that comes with the-
But I'm saying all, okay.
The first two, yes.
I think we're quite confused, I must tell you.
I think we need to table this one, Mayor, and bring this one back, until we have a-
Yeah, it's not making a lot of-
Yeah.
-statistical sense right now. And I'm sure it's us, not the information, but-
I think the majority of the issue is that a lot of this is based on market, rather than actual cost of service, and that will not reflect, if you're going to use market rates and not price yourself out of the market, you're not going to be able to reflect actual cost of service. So I think that's a big part of the confusion.
What we can do is clean up some of these confusions in the slide to make it more clear as to exactly what it is you're voting on, even knowing that the market is what it is, but clarifying what it is you're voting on, and that, you know, weekend is separate from this and that.
Go ahead, Tom.
So something, Jeremy, you have on this page that I like, and, and all of this, you've got proposed fee, 500 bucks. I would like to see that buck on the slide we looked at two ago. I think you could average all those out, 1650, you know, you're looking, 1682, we're coming up in 15. If you averaged all those to 1650, you would be able to recoup a loss, going back to your first slide. But I don't know if that helps you when you, right there, right that slide. So I don't know, getting back to your market where you compare against all the others, but I thought if you took a straight 1650-
rate on all of those.
Either the infant, opening, closing?
Yes. But I mean, you know this better than I, and I'll side with Brent High. This is not our business. We're up here giving an oversight of something we're not professionally trained to handle here, but it just looks like if there was one fee and you could average and recoup, that would be a good way to do it. But if we're gonna table this and bring it back, that's a discussion for a later time.
Okay.
Well, and I think the other question is, again, lack of knowledge, lack of information, but even though cost of service is, we're wanting to be market competitive, but is there not a market where people say, I wanna be in this cemetery, not the other cemetery's available, but it's cheaper over here, so I'm gonna choose to move my burial plot that I've bought already over to another cemetery because it's cheaper? I mean, I don't, that sounds.
I mean, it does happen. It happens.
Most definitely.
Mayor, I'd like to add one thing in regards to the conversation about averaging these fees. The reason we have to do the fee study the way we do is because we can't exceed the cost of service in any of these fees, otherwise it becomes impermissible tax. So if we know that some of these charges are less, just averaging them all out and giving one fee for convenience isn't probably appropriate.
You just have to know all of that. Again, we're being educated. Sorry, our education level's low on this subject.
Mayor, but John, you need to know what you're voting on as well, so we wanna make sure, yeah, we wanna make sure that y'all are very clear on that. So again, bringing it back, we can do that.
So one last comment. Jeremy, you showed some passion when I talked about on the infant. If that one needs to stay, if there's some compassion in that pricing, I, I get that.
I think that should be looked at separately.
I'd like to ask a question, but if you could go to that slide on the, Tommy was alluding to. I guess I wonder what the difference in the service between the regular and the infant, to have that much of a, a dollar difference?
Particularly in terms of what the actual cost is, which was.
Are you talking about the opening and closing?
Yeah.
Different?
A regular one is 1550.
Correct, you're looking at a full.
What, what is the cause for the difference in, in the cost of service?
Cost of service on regular is 1682 versus 1426 for an infant.
No, no, I mean, what do they do on the opening and closing for an infant burial as opposed to what they do for a regular burial?
Well, the regular burial, you're looking at a full-size casket that you have to use a backhoe, but also on the infant, it just depends, the cemetery, some of it has rock, and so when it, when it's areas where there's rock, then we have to use a backhoe, but normally we do it by hand.
For the infant, you dig the hole by hand?
If we can.
Okay. Thank you.
But it could still be on a family's plot, right, so.
True.
Yeah, I, I think that we're, there's a lot of confusion here. Let's, let's bring it back at the next meeting, and we'll all get a little more educated and come back a little more informed.
Sounds like a plan.
Yeah, that we're not asking dumb questions.
Thank you, Jeremy.
All right, the next one is Fort Concho.
Okay, we're moving some fees here as well for services no longer offered. Mr. Bluth Hart is here to answer any questions.
As y'all get into those, on the half-day rates, as you get into them, Bob is gonna correct an error that was made on those, so y'all see that coming up for his correction.
Right, yeah. We need to make a change to what he submitted on the half-day rates. So removing these fees, and then going on to proposed fees.
Well, that's, that, I was, I'm sorry, that was too fast.
I'm sorry.
Removing fees on these.
Morning, Mayor, Council.
You're no longer gonna charge for the pancake breakfast?
That's not a charge that we create, that's the Lions. And since the Lions sort of control the money line on that, and they know what their expenses are, it's, makes more sense for them to control that. Also makes the bookkeeping easier for us. The courtyard is just an issue. We can't maintain that with grass that a renter, that a renter would like to see. Soil is bad, it's difficult for us to keep traffic off it, and we often have worker crews pounding at the deaf. So it wasn't a popular rental venue anyway, so we just rolled that into the Barrack Six rental, and that's why that rental will go up a little, and it probably won't have a lot of financial effect on us. Cowboy Day, well, you know, San Angelo has a reputation of being deaf to those who are SVP. If you're trying to run a breakfast with perishables for 100 people, and you buy for 110 show up, and that's what happened the last two years, so we just pulled that, and we just have some free fruits and, cakes and coffee and so, and so forth, and people seem to like it better that way. And the evening at Fort Concho, that harkens back to an earlier age when we used to get a lot of bus groups. People don't do bus groups anymore. They take care of their own business. The internet has allowed everyone to be their own travel agent, so we haven't done one of those in years. We have other fees there to take care of those expenses if something comes up similar to that, but the old days of a busload of folks coming in from Peoria, and we charge them so much per, for our services, those, they're gone. So tidying just up the bookkeeping.
Okay, for Barrack Six, going from a current fee of $300 to a proposed fee of $350. Commissary going from 600 to 700 dollars. OQ One going from 125 to 175, to 150 to 200, and then OQA going from 250 to 300. And I think this is the one where we needed to make the adjustment for the half-day rate, which is written right now into the resolution as it was before, but it needs to be language that says it would be one-half of whatever the daily rate is.
Just a comment on the fees, on the charges themselves. These have not been raised since October of 2017, so that's six years. Last I checked on Inflation Watch, there's been a 20 to 25% increase in expenses since then for everything, so this just is plain catch-up. These were discussed and approved by the staff, given to the board, and we also looked very carefully at other rental venues across the city to make sure that we were being competitive. And this is for us a major business model. This is one of our larger revenue sources that allow us to do all the free and low-cost things we do all year long.
Questions for Bob, from anyone? Harry, do you have any questions or comments on these fees? Okay.
No, I do not. Appreciate the work to get them to where they are today.
Okay.
For the Quartermaster, moving from 500, this is another adjustment Bob needed to make. This proposed fee should be 600 rather than 700 dollars. The Stables going from 1,500 to 1,750. Baseball Demonstration going from $6 per person to $7 per person, and the Frontier Day booth rentals going from 10 to 100 dollars to 15 to 100 dollars.
Why is the minimum increased but not the maximum?
For which one?
Well, Frontier Day, it's 10 to 100, but the increase is that on the $10, but nothing on the $100.
Quite honestly, that is one we don't use very often, and we didn't see a need to raise it that high. Frontier Day, unlike Christmas, is a four-hour event versus three days, and we frankly haven't had more than a handful of profit, non, non-profit booths that would merit the charge for. So this is not a major revenue area. I don't think we get anybody to pay $100 to hang out on the porches for four hours. The others, the differences in the, in the charges represent basically the size of the building, the capacity of the building, and the amenities of the building. If you've been to the Commissary, that's our workhorse building, it has a kitchen. Quartermaster does not. On the other hand, Stables is four times the size of all the other buildings. So it's all a matter of what the customer wants and price it accordingly.
Questions on any line item here? Okay, keep moving on.
Halloween theme night program going from 5 to 15 to 8 to 15. The Christmas event going from 3 to 7 dollars to 5 to 9 dollars, and then the Christmas event space rental going from 3 to 400 dollars to 350 to 500 dollars.
And again, the question is, we go from 5 to 8, but 15 stays 15 on the night program for Halloween.
That's correct. We, we think the 15 is sort of a top rate for us. We looked at some other events in the city, and we do very well at that rate, and I think if we go any higher, we may discourage folks. It's also a family-friendly thing. We get a lot of families that come out for that. The Christmas event is always a hot button. Everybody loves the event, that's the one thing, everybody knows what we do. Those rates haven't changed in almost nine years. I can pretty much tell you inflation has eaten up a lot of that value in the last nine years, and this will allow us to play some catch-up. And the Christmas event rental, we like a little float in there, simply because this is a very challenging market for us. There were not as many folks out there who do these kind of shows as they used to. So we have to be very aggressive in finding them, and we don't wanna price ourselves out of the market, so this gives us a bit of a float to, to use and make sure we're not costing ourselves out of having all the buildings filled.
No further questions on this slide? Okay, then may I have a motion to approve the Fort Concho fee increases?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Karen, seconded by Lucy. All those, any public comment on these Fort Concho fees? Seeing none, we will, or hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Fort Concho fees are approved, seven to zero.
We thank you and prosperity.
The next one is planning.
Okay, so again, removing some fees here from the ordinance for services no longer provided. Conveyance of property interest and right-of-way for improved streets and alleys, unimproved streets and alleys, and streets and alleys where significant easements for access by the public and/or utilities are reserved. And then under general provisions, a discount that applied to fees for plan reviews that expired in May of 2021.
Okay, so on the conveyance of property, when we say administration fee, what's the cost of the land itself? Where, where does the cost of the land fall into? Is that a separate line item?
Yes, John James, Director of Planning and Development Services, that's a separate fee that's, as, when we bring abandonments of rights of way to you, we mentioned the fee for that, and that's a separate fee that's already in there. Frankly, I'm not sure exactly what this is intended to, to be charged for. It's something we've never charged, and so as we were looking through cleaning up, we believe that other fee captures all of the costs necessary for that abandonment process.
So for improved streets and alleys, who would have we charged that fee to?
Well, it's not uncommon for a developer to request abandonment of a street where there is actually a street there or an alley. Oftentimes, you'll see them where a street or alley was never built, like the one, I think it was on Second Reading today for the school. There wasn't a street actually there, but sometimes we do get a request for abandonment of a street where there is an actual street in place.
So these fees are things that have not been used over a certain period of time?
That's right. Again, we, we have an abandonment fee that's based on the square footage of the land to be abandoned, as well as the, the market value of that, it's a percentage of the market value of that amount of property. And so I think that fee captures, again, what, what we want from those abandonments.
Okay, so under general provisions, discount expired 5, 421. Discount applies to fees for plan reviews associated with subdivision plaits and urban design reviews. Will we still do those?
Yeah, this was a discount we, we offered, we, we did kind of a trial run of offering a discount for folks who submitted their projects digitally, back when we originally rolled out our digital plan review software. But when you all adopted that, you put an expiration date on it of May 2021. So that fee has actually already gone away, but it's still listed in the resolution of fees, and so it's just cleaning that up to remove it. We, we have been in discussions with the Development Task Force about a possible new, either additional fee if you don't submit digitally, or a discount for submitting digitally, but we're still kinda working through the details on that.
What percent of them are, are done digitally today?
I don't have a number for that. It's, it's increased since we got our plan review software. It also depends on, we have like commercial plans, virtually all of them are submitted digitally. Residential plans, you know, it's, it varies, but it's, it's definitely not all of them. Things like plaits are almost exclusively digital, and so it, it depends on the type of project and plan that's, that's being submitted. But it, it's increasing every year, more and more people are, are going through the, the digital process, partly because it's, it makes the review process faster. If they submit a paper set of plans, first thing we have to do is have staff go scan those, upload them, and so that adds some extra time in the review process.
Questions from Council?
On this slide, these first two fees are decreasing when our proposed rates from one, the Design and Historic Review Admin from 195 to 120, the Administrative Amendment from 130 to 80, and then setting up a new fee called Site Plan Review for Resubmission, a proposed fee of $280. And I'll let John speak to why there's a new fee as well as some decreases in those first two.
Yeah, basically, the two decreases are as we looked through our cost of providing those services, we felt like it was justifiable to reduce those based on the amount of time that they actually do take. The new plan, we, most or many of our site plans that get submitted don't take multiple cycles, but we have some, some submissions that we have to review multiple times. And so this, this is a fee that would charge an additional fee because, you know, it's the same people reviewing each time that goes through. It's actually less than the first review because the first review is more comprehensive, and it does take more time. But when, when they don't make all the corrections that we've given them, we have to spend, you know, a fair amount of time reviewing those a second time. I, I will point out that this would be for the second resubmission, so if, if somebody submits a commercial site plan, we review it, give them a list of corrections they need to make, they resubmit those corrections, there wouldn't be a charge at that point. If they submit something that hasn't made all those corrections, and then have to submit a third time after we've given them a second round of comments, it would be that third submission that would have this resubmission fee.
What happens if you all ask for additional things when you get set ready to re-review it the second?
That's a pretty rare occurrence. I think if that happened, we would not charge that fee if we, if we learned of something that, that wasn't addressed in the first place. Now, most of the time when that happens, it's when something changes, so they submit their first plan, we say, hey, you need to correct these things. Well, in the process of correcting those, something else changes. So an example, a recent, a recent example is because of one department's comment, the developer had to move the dumpster over. Well, when they resubmitted, they moved the dumpster where it was suggested, but then that blocked the fire lane. And so the Fire Marshal's Office said, well, no, you're blocking the fire lane, you have to, you have to adjust something else. The developer sort of saw that as a new, you know, they said, well, you never said anything about the fire lane in the first place, but it was only because they moved the dumpster into the fire lane that created that, something new that hadn't been commented on the initial review.
Was that dumpster in the original plan?
It was in the original plan, but, and I don't remember the specifics. I think it was within a setback or created a visibility issue at a driveway, and so it had to be moved. Our comment was just, you need to move it out of this, this visibility triangle area.
We didn't say move it, but don't put it in the fire lane.
Well, no, we, we're not that specific, but, but they ended up moving it.
They move it into the fire.
They also require, I mean, they, they know the rules, they look through those and are aware of those, so normally we don't have to say that.
All right, I'm adding three more fees under planning for right-of-way encroachment, for admin, sidewalk waiver, and a development plan fee.
Why are these new?
Well, and the first one's a little misleading. Right now, we just have a right-of-way encroachment fee, and it's $450. So. So if you come in for a right-of-way encroachment, you're paying four hundred and fifty regardless of if it's one that comes to council or it's done administratively. So what we're doing is creating a new fee for those that are administrative with a much lesser fee because it doesn't have the whole process of having to go to council. So it's, this actually is really a reduction in the fee. The other two fees are processes that have been created over the last few years that ordinances were adopted to create these processes, but a fee was never established for them. And so it's just establishing a fee for those processes that already exist.
We've never had a development plan fee before?
Well, no, a development plan is something new. It's actually a replacement for a site plan. So instead of doing a full-blown site plan where you're paying maybe four or five hundred dollars for the fee, it's a more simplified review in certain circumstances where all we have to review are things like parking. So if a building's use is changing, for example, and they're going from a retail to a restaurant, we have to review the parking, but there's no sense in having them do the full site plan process and pay four hundred dollars because we're only reviewing a limited number of things. And so I guess another way to look at this one is it's decreasing the fee. Although, when we created those two separate processes, we never actually created a fee for the development plan. So we actually aren't charging them that full site plan fee, which we probably could be doing. But now we're creating the new fee of seventy-five.
So the current fee did exist, it just kind of was labeled different?
That's it under the planning.
Okay, questions or comments from council? Yes, Tom?
No, Brenda, I'm, John, and you covered it on the resubmission. As long as we're fair, because there'll be times where we get a call, and it's like the fourth time somebody's made a trip up there, and they're like, hey, I gotta pay this fee. And so I don't know when you start these, but I would sure encourage everybody to do a consult, especially if they're not a professional that does a lot of development, just to be fair, to make sure they're not getting a redundant fee placed on them. I appreciate your fairness in going through that. I really do.
May I have a motion for approval of the planning fees? So moved by Tommy, seconded by Tom. Any public comment on those fees? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes seven to zero. We will now move into permits and inspections. So you're on.
So again, starting out with removal of fees, these also expired in May of 2021. So we're just cleaning up the fee schedule by removing them.
So you no longer get a discount?
I believe John said this was a discount related to digital submission when we first implemented the software, and council put an expiration date on that discount of May four, 2021, when we did that.
Yeah, I'm a little confused because we were just talking about, well, we might do something different because we need to re-review those done by computer versus whatever. So we're just saying there's no fee then for residential commercial review?
No, there's no longer a discount related to digitally submitting. There's still a fee involved.
No incentive to do it digitally?
Correct.
But we're trying to get people to do it digitally.
I think initially, we proposed a digital, or a non-digital fee when we came to council the last time. And I think we got some feedback that that was not.
And in this case, there was an expiration date placed on that, and so this is just adhering to that. If you want to continue to offer it, you can do that.
Well, it sounds like to me, if we're trying to motivate people to do it digitally, then I think we ought to re-review the discount expiration date if the intent is to continue to incentivize people to do it digitally.
Didn't you say, John, y'all were talking about that?
We hope to do that. In fact, as Tina mentioned, we had brought a non-digital submission extra add-on fee last time we brought these. As we met with the development community, there were a lot of questions on, well, what does it mean to submit digitally? What if I, if I send it as a PDF but don't upload it into the software? Does that count or not? Are there any exceptions? And so we had some exceptions. But with the back and forth with the development community, we thought, let's just hold off on that until next year, until we can work that out, some of those details a little better, before we bring that back to you.
As he said, if you do want to re-implement the discount, you can certainly do that until John has time to work through that, but that's at council's.
All I know is if you're trying to encourage people to do it that way, then we need to be specific about what that does mean. Is a PDF digital or not? Because PDFs have to be done digitally. So how is that not digital?
John, you may just want to stay up here, actually.
Yeah.
There's more work involved, right?
Yeah, there is more work. Like I mentioned, if they submit it digitally, it's in the system. And the way it works, we send that out to all the reviewers, and it's done through the software, and they get a notice that they have something to review. But if they submit it on paper, we have to scan it, upload it. It takes extra staff time to do that. But even if they email a PDF, we still have to download that, load it into the software. So there is some extra work there. But then it gets complicated. So, you know, they, it does actually help us if they submit it as a digital PDF. But it's not as helpful if they, as if they load it directly into the software. But we still need to work out some of those details. If we're going to give people a discount, personally, I think ideally, it would be only if they go completely software, upload it directly. That's what saves us staff time and money. Otherwise, you know, it's not as helpful.
So if we said we want to extend the discount, but the discount applies only if you use the software approach to it, not the PDF approach?
You could do that. Again, we had proposed this fee, and in talking with the development community, there were enough questions that we thought, let's just hold off, so.
There's confusion. Leave it alone.
Yeah, I would recommend not doing that. We'll definitely come back to you with something next year as we flesh out the details a little more.
So moving on to the fees, proposed fees for no alterations going from one oh five to one ninety-five, for minor alterations from one seventy to three hundred, and for multiple inspections from four ninety-five to eight ninety.
Okay, so if there's no alterations, why is the fee going up?
I'm going to hand it off to the expert, Charlie, our building, Charlie Kemp, our building official, I think can better answer some of these detailed questions about what these processes are and the fees. But in general, we did all of the cost of service calculations, and these are all fees that we already have. And the cost of service, you know, we're, again, at your direction, trying to get closer to that hundred percent. And so most of these that you'll see today, permits and inspections, is just taking that first step to get closer to a hundred percent.
And I'm confused about what no alterations is, because if there's no change, no anything going on, what's the current fee even? Why do we even have a fee if there's no change at all?
Good morning, Charlie Kemp, building official.
Welcome.
On a change of occupancy with no alterations, we're still doing a review for what the property's owned, is it allowed? And then we're also making that inspection. So, for example, if you're doing a change of occupancy, you're going from, say, an office space to now you're going to be retail sales. We still do a change of occupancy for that, and there's an application and a permit process.
So there really is nothing, quote, defined as no alterations?
No alterations would be they're doing no remodel at all inside the building. They're just changing the use.
Any other questions on this slide?
Okay, on multiple inspections, that means your inspector's going to go back into that same facility multiple times because we didn't pass the inspection the first time. So you're going to come back a second time to re-inspect it?
Not exactly. Minor alterations would be considered, like if you're remodeling, maybe just moving some interior walls and things like that. And so that falls under your minor alterations, multiple inspections. That would be if you're doing electrical, mechanical, and plumbing. And so you have other inspectors that would go out there other than just the building inspector and the fire inspector.
Is that a one-time fee, Charlie, or is that a multiple?
Yes, sir. It's a one-time fee, and it's only when they're changing the use of the building that this applies.
So even if they had, if we had to go out there three times, all the max are going to pay the eight ninety?
That's correct. That's correct. The only time that you would fall into maybe like a re-inspect is the inspectors, if they go out there multiple times, say, for example, you have your plumbing inspector go out there, he does a top out. They have an issue. He tells them how to fix it. They go out, they call back, he goes out again. They still haven't fixed it. And then, by then, we start talking to that contractor about re-inspect fees. But initially, this is a one-time fee.
So when you say multiple inspections, you're talking about tasks not showing up? So it's like having plumbing, electrical, whatever. The multiple means the product. It doesn't mean the number of trips.
Correct. Multiple inspections mean, yes, different trades and different inspections for that trade.
Okay, questions, comments? Okay, moving on.
For foundation-only residential going from fifty-five to ninety-five dollars, and then accessory structure going from forty to eighty-five dollars.
Even though the accessory structure might be half the size of the residential?
Yes, ma'am, because it's still taking us the same amount of time to do those reviews and do those inspections. On the accessory structure, because you're thinking of drive time and inspector time, but on the accessory structures, typically, they are going to be smaller. So once they get out there, there's going to be a little less time.
All right, on demolition fees, commercial going from one fifteen to one seventy-five, residential from fifty-five to ninety-five, and accessory structure from thirty to seventy dollars.
Any questions on this slide? Is that per hour or is just total fee?
That's total fee.
So regardless of the amount of time it takes?
Really? Tear down something for seventy bucks?
The city would not be tearing it down. We're doing the inspection for that.
Okay.
So you're coming to the city to ask to tear it down, and in that ask, we charge you seventy dollars to ask to take it down? Questions become expensive.
Well, we do, we do make an inspection on that, and we do make sure that, like, that your sewer line's capped, that you don't have any, like, wires that would be concerning and be a fire hazard. Those are some of the things that, when we do go out to look at that, we make sure that they don't leave anything that would be considered unsafe.
That makes more sense. Thank you, Charlie.
Looking at approach curb cuts, residential would go from thirty to seventy, commercial from fifty-five to ninety-five, and in-state right-of-way add fifty, or five dollars to thirty dollars.
In-state right-of-way, we have the authority to mess with the right-of-way of the state?
We are responsible to process that application. We do send it over to the state for their approval. So it does take additional time. That's why that's an additional thirty dollars. We get with them, they look, and then we are ultimately the ones that inspect it to their guidelines.
Questions, comments on this slide?
For swimming pools, for commercial going from seventy-five to ninety dollars, residential above ground from thirty-five to seventy, and residential in-ground from forty to seventy-five.
Any questions? And again, these are total fee, not hourly fees, correct?
For temporary occupancy, residential going from fifty to seventy dollars, and commercial going from a hundred to a hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Temporaries for how long?
Temporary CO is good for thirty days, and then you can ask for an extension.
For electrical base fee going from forty to seventy dollars, installation requiring more than two inspections would go from fifty to sixty dollars. Plumbing base fee going from forty to seventy-five, and large fixture going from seven dollars and fifty cents to eight dollars.
Large fixture.
Your large fixtures are going to be like your main sewer lines, your main water lines, your main gas lines, grease traps, sand traps, things like that. The small fixtures are three dollars, and they stay the same. We did not increase those.
And then mechanical base fee going from forty to seventy-five, commercial venahood going from twenty-five to sixty, and then a voucher going from twenty to thirty-five dollars.
Voucher is why?
We have been in a voucher program for, I want to say, close to twenty years. And what that is, is when you're doing a change-out in a residential, like for like, so it has to be exactly the same thing. We, about every ten replacements, because everybody permits those, we look at those, and then we do check jobs or go and do inspections. So the reason is because of the volume. We don't have the manpower to do all of those. So we came up with the voucher program so that every tenth one, we're still looking at and inspecting. And you can get a voucher on it and request to have that inspected as well, on your mechanical systems only.
For signs, billboards going from one sixty-five to two eighty-five, wall signs going from fifty to one oh five, freestanding two to fifty square feet, sixty to one fifteen, freestanding fifty-one and up, seventy dollars to a hundred and twenty dollars, and then portable signs going from forty to seventy-five dollars.
So if you change the advertising on the billboard, every time you change the advertising on the billboard, it's two eighty-five?
Only if they're going to have to replace the can or any structural portion of that billboard. So like the vinyl, that does not require permit. We only look at it if they're changing the can. That also applies to your freestanding signs.
Any questions?
General fees, for an hourly rate in excess of two hours would be sixty dollars. Inspection convenience fee, six, from twenty-five to sixty dollars, temporary tents from forty to eighty-five dollars.
Okay, so the convenience fee is the same as the, okay, so that one's a final fee, the other one's an hourly rate?
So on a convenience fee, if you call, we're on a half-day notice. So if you call that morning, your inspection's set up for that afternoon. And our cutoff is at twelve fifty-five, right before one o'clock when we all get back from lunch. There are times that we'll get contractors to call at two o'clock, and they want the inspector to come out there by five o'clock because, say, for example, they need to pour their concrete. And so if we have the manpower to do that, we'll do that, but we do charge a convenience fee because you, sometimes it may create the inspector to go into later hours or do a little less time, but there is a fee for that.
Okay, so it's at twelve fifty-five, but you're closed from twelve to one?
Yes, but we get calls and emails up to, like, throughout the lunch hour, so we answer all of those. So if somebody emailed or called at twelve fifty-eight, you get down for that afternoon.
Residential construction, base fee going from fifty to seventy-five dollars. Residential structure, living area going from thirteen cents to fourteen cents. Garage, carport, supportches, patios, and accessories from ten to eleven cents. Residential remodel repairs and et cetera going from five cents to eleven cents.
I'm going to stop right here for a minute, and, because we've got people in the audience today from the home builders, and I want to know up until now if there's any public comment on any of the items that we've just gone through or where we are currently. And could you come forward so we don't get too far down the road and we lose track of where we're at?
Rocky Templin, single member District Six. On this draft right here, that was in y'all's packet on page one twenty-two, on the proposed years three and four, and the current fees, all the fees that Tina just listed are all above the fees for year twenty-four in either category. And so every one of them is above except for these three right here. And so I do want to thank y'all for postponing this last time and then letting us work on it because on these three fees, they made a major improvement where, and we didn't have a year twenty-six until I saw this in the. a year twenty-six until, I saw this in the packet, we did have a year twenty-four and twenty-five. And so on a twelve-hundred and fourteen-hundred square foot house, before we came, proposed was like at four hundred and seventy-three dollars, they've reduced that to three eleven in this current year. And then next year, it will go to three seventy, and then now in twenty-six, it will go to four fifteen, which is great. At that time, it's only going to be eighty-seven percent of cost. And then on the medium-sized house, the same thing. We were at six twenty-six before, they've got that reduced to four twenty, and then next year, four ninety-one, and in year twenty-six, five fifty, which is ninety-seven percent of cost. And so that's very good. On the bigger house, the twenty-eight forty-three house, we were at a thousand dollars, they got it reduced to six forty-nine this year, seven forty-five next year, and then in twenty-six, we will be at eight thirty-three. At the current values, we'll be at a hundred and eleven percent of cost. So, but in twenty-six, that may be a wash. So all those are great. So the concern was just on the whole list that we received in the packet today, every fee that she just announced is higher than the proposed fee for this year.
Those are all the ones we've just moved through?
Yes, whether it was a three-year or a four-year. So that's the question, why we just received that, or those fees are not on this draft that y'all received in your packet.
Okay, so do we want to review those fees versus what you all had proposed, so we better understand the discussion relative to proposal versus pre-?
Yeah, we would just like to know why they were proposed at this, and even on everything we got, back on the twenty-third, we still didn't receive the fees that we received today at the Developmental Task Force meeting.
So the answer to that question would be, by who?
So like we mentioned when we brought this to you last time, on some of the fees, if it was like thirty-two dollars, we rounded to thirty-five dollars after discussion with the department, just to have a, you know, a more round number to charge, and so that would be the difference of maybe a couple of dollars between some of these fees.
Yeah, a couple, I mean, I think one question I've heard is why did we just get new information yesterday, which is what I think I heard?
That I am not aware of. I didn't understand that part of the comment, so.
And I can add something. Some of these fees had already got, had already done the first year of increase, and so it's a little misleading to have the fiscal year of each, because for some of them, we're actually on step two, so you would actually be looking at the column that says FY twenty-five, because what those labels probably should be instead of twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six are year one, year two, year three, because on some of those fees, we already did the year one increase, and now we're going to the year two increase.
But how does one know the difference between one sheet of paper that designates year and another sheet of paper that designates one, two, or three? Because who knows what year one was? Was that twenty-two?
In this case, it was probably twenty-nineteen.
Okay, so that's the confusion. And so the question mark is, we're at the Development Task Force meeting, was everyone looking at the same statistics, meaning year one in that conversation versus twenty-nineteen versus twenty-twenty-three, or are we talking twenty-twenty-two versus twenty-twenty-three? And is year two twenty-twenty-three if year one was twenty-nineteen?
So your, the, the fees that were changed in twenty-nineteen are considered year two now, even though it's been four years, because we delayed it for the previous three years. So we're in year two, or cycle two, or however you want to label it, of those fees, but in the remainder, we're in the first cycle for the ones that were just doing the second third of permit fees.
Okay, and then the next question is, obviously, they're confused about the conversation in the Development Task Force meeting that said, here's what we recommend, and then today we're seeing different numbers from the recommended conversation at the Development Task Force meeting, if I'm understanding that correctly. Am I understanding that correctly? Okay, so let's talk about the conversation and the, what was believed to be an agreement in the Development Task Force meeting with the cost of service versus what's being presented today.
Okay. Kimberly says that we've made no changes to our proposal except for the residential and commercial construction, which I think that Rocky was happy with those changes.
Rocky, what were you referring to? Because I think there's confusion and all of that.
Rocky Templin, yes, the page you received in your draft for your packet today of page one twenty-two is the exact page that we had at the Developmental Task Force on June twenty-third. So all these figures are exactly the same. The difference is, say on CO multiple inspections, where it said current year twenty-four was going to be at seven thirty-four, she is saying now that that fee will be eight hundred and ninety dollars. So that's an increase of a hundred and fifty-six dollars. And so it's that way throughout the entire list.
Year to the June twenty-third?
Yes. Well, just from what she announced. So our concern is if this is today, and we're in between twenty-five and twenty-six on the values, where are we going to be on twenty-six and twenty-seven? If they increase at the same, the values that she's using today, are we going to exceed the cost of services?
Okay, explanation from someone on that?
I don't have the sheet in front of me, but on the multiple inspections for the change of occupancy, there was a mileage concern, and so we did deduct some of the mileage, so it lowered the cost of it, did not increase it.
Rocky, is that correct for what you're looking at?
I was looking at a whole list.
And we did send those out, we sent out the ones that we changed for mileage, and it was the change of occupancy, the new, the new residence, and then also provided the change, because one thing that we, and it was kind of confusing, and we did explain it to him, we took three houses, and we took a small house, medium-sized house, and a large house, and maybe that wasn't the best way to do it, we tried to figure out how to be fair. Well, on a large house, you're going to spend more time with your permits, your inspections, your reviews, it's larger. So instead of saying, okay, for the large house, we're going to charge you this, for the middle-sized house, we're going to charge you this, and for the small house, we're going to charge you this, because the smaller houses take less.
That's reasonable.
Yes, so we combined.
Everyone gets that.
Right, so we combined those. Well, when you, when we did that, it showed the percentage, the cost of service percentage a little bit higher on the larger houses, because it's saying, you know, you're taking more, but when you averaged it out, we were below the hundred percent, we were like at eighty percent. We understood that that was kind of frustrating on, at the home, for the home builders, so what we did was we went back and we made sure that no house, even the large-sized house, would not exceed a hundred percent. So by doing that, you are deducting quite a large amount off of your medium-sized house and your small house to get all of them to come out to that, to be that hundred percent, or eighty percent.
Rocky, does that make sense from what you're looking at?
Yeah, that part was right. The question was like on a CO on multiple inspections, year twenty-four, it was projected at seven thirty-four, and Tina said it's going to be eight ninety, starting today. So if we're already here, so where's it going to be? The next one was nine seventy-three, is it going to jump to a thousand or twelve hundred and so on?
That is the number from when we deducted it. I don't know.
Mayor, we have no trouble with adjusting any of these proposed fees, that's the whole purpose of this discussion, is to get council's feedback and see where we want to end up, but we're still not getting to the cost of service with what we're proposing, and so that's a discussion we certainly have.
Here's our concern, is Rocky's referring to page one twenty-two, which when we pull up the agendas and the back, the documents in our packet, we have page one of two, we don't have a hundred and twenty-two pages of fees to review.
I think he's talking about one twenty-two of your entire PDF document that you get in your background, is what I'm guessing.
Correct.
Okay.
So Tina, I think if I was to sum it up here, they would just like to see the final number before it comes up to be the final number, before we'll show you, they want something that matches. I don't think there's an argument per se with the fee, but it's having less than, the phone call I get from that group is typically.
Say from every thing that I've heard and the emails that I've seen, that we were all in agreement before this meeting, so I'm not sure where this confusion is coming from, so.
We're all hunting here a little bit.
But on that one fee in particular, this one, eight ninety is proposed, that cost of service is twelve twelve, so we're still only getting to seventy-three percent of the cost of service.
I think their question mark also is, again, that conversation I said earlier, is this year one, year two, year three, or is this twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five?
I don't really think that matters. I mean, we're in cycle two of the twenty-nineteen changes, we're in cycle one of the current year changes.
It does matter, so.
Mayor, if I could, Tina, you're asking for one year's approval, you're not asking for a three-year cycle, is that correct?
Correct.
So before the next increase is implemented, it has to pass muster with council. So it doesn't matter what those out columns say, you're approving one set of fees today, and that next step will have to come back to council, is that correct?
Actually, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Trace, but I think the ordinance now states that we will move to one-third of the cost of service every year.
That's correct. That's what we passed in twenty-nineteen, I believe.
So this is a multi-year approach?
It is. And that was discussed extensively with city council in twenty-nineteen, and that's what we were directed to do.
I thought we had dropped that part.
No, it's, Tina's correct.
So that's why they're saying.
We've just voted to delay it for the last three years, and so that's why we are where we are.
I think that may be, at least for me, the bottom line, is we directed staff in twenty-eighteen to get to the break-even point. To me, this discussion, while important, is not the overriding factor. We're still going to be, even at eight ninety, and the cost of service is twelve twelve, we need to get to the cost of providing the service, because we're feeding the general fund from the general fund to cover, and that's all the taxpayers doing that. These are, these are, if I'm, unless I misunderstand, these are really user fees. The people that are paying for this are those using a specific service. So again, we, my mind can't get anything wrapped around, we're still not at covering the cost of service. Let's cover the cost of service. That may be way too simplistic.
I agree with that, one hundred percent.
Probably is, but here, but the issue is, is if we're presenting the information to the builders, the Home Builders Association, and we're giving them specific information as it relates to, here's the proposed fee for year one, then year two, and then year three. So are we approving each one of these only for the current year?
Yes.
Because they're looking at, I believe, they have the information, that's multiple years.
That is intentionally labeled.
To get to a final number.
That is intentionally labeled with a big draft watermark across it, because when we get to the next cycle next year, we're going to recalculate cost of service and go another third to that one hundred percent. And that's per ordinance that we've been directed to do by city council.
We could change the ordinance, should we choose?
I don't think that's wise though, Mayor. I mean, we do need to get to the point where we're covering the cost of service. We're not looking for profit, we're looking for just covering the cost of service.
Right now, the revenue budget into planning and development services is a million dollars, whereas the expense coming out of it is two-point-five million, so.
I think there were some GIS numbers in that that were not pulled out, so that's not apples to apples.
Yeah, it's probably about half a million. I think, I think John said it's probably about half a million of their expense budget, so it'd be about one million dollars being subsidized.
Tina, did you show on this presentation, I mean preview with the fees you're showing us here today, did they see those at the last advisory meeting?
They're shaking their heads, no.
My understanding was that we were all in agreement before I came to this meeting, or else I wouldn't be up here presenting to you, so if there's some disconnect or confusion, I'm not sure where it's coming from.
Kristen, you want to come speak?
I'm Kristen Oliver with the Home Builders Association. We've been working great with the city trying to get this, we all know the fees need to go up. I guess the confusion was that the last communications that we received were at the end of June, that did have the year twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, which actually matched what you received in your packet. So these fees do not line up with what the other page is. So that's what we're kind of, we were confused when they started presenting those, because those were not the numbers that we were, that we were given at the very last communication. They said this is what we were going to be going off of. So that's, that's only our, was our only concern, because we never received a final draft that was, that was actually, that we, these were the numbers that we had been working off of.
You said when you left that meeting that those would be the numbers presented, is that the comment?
These were, this was the last communication that was sent to us, and so, and that's where our discussions were, from these numbers. And so like I said, we did not realize that the other numbers were the ones that were being presented. So, I mean, not that we're, I guess we just needed a little bit more transparency on that. Like I said, we just, we were not aware that these numbers were, were changing from what we had been talking about, so.
So Charlie just showed me the sheet that they were handed out at the meeting back in June, and it is, does include this, eight ninety, and those were the proposed fees, they haven't changed since then. What they're referring to is a, like I said, intentionally labeled draft document to show city council the difference in moving from a year three to a year four plan, and these are all rough estimates. Again, that will change next year when we come to fee review process and we do recalculate the cost of service, and so it is not intended to be a final draft of anything, but the fee schedule they were given back in June matches these numbers.
No, they're saying it doesn't, that's the confusion, Tina, that's why.
Charlie just pulled it up on the laptop, and it matches the numbers. They're just looking at a sheet of paper that they had in their hands, that's all.
I think the confusion is that on June twenty-first, we provided them with all the numbers you've just seen, and we met with them. Subsequent to that, they, they, or during that meeting, they said, well, we didn't see the three-year versus four-year plan, so finance put together that sheet that they're referencing that had a really rough three-year, four-year plan, and they're correct, those, those fees did not match in year one with these fees we've proposed, and I think the confusion was they thought that that three-year, four-year comparison was an update to those fees. We never changed those fees that we were proposing, and I can see that confusion, but the, the point of that chart was really just to show that going from a three-year plan to a four-year plan really didn't make much difference, but those were never intended to be the actual proposed fees. That was on the other sheet that everybody has seen that had the actual proposed fees.
Well, I know if I was at that meeting and I had a sheet of paper in front of me that said year one would be this number, regardless of what year two, and year three, and year four were, I would expect that year one would be on here matching that sheet of paper.
It is on that sheet. It does match the proposed fee that we gave them on that sheet. It's this draft document.
To the, to the mic, Tina, please.
It did match on the schedule we gave them at that meeting John just referred to. These numbers all match that schedule that they all had from that meeting. Again, it's just the draft that we provided city council to show, because we were asked to bring a four-year and a versus a three-year plan, the only reason we even put that document in your background was to show you that there were very nominal differences, most less than ten dollars if we went to a four-year versus a three-year. So we were proposing that we should stay the course in a three-year plan, just like we do with all of our other fees that we review, to cause less confusion and to make sure we stay on track in getting to our goal.
I'd like to add that some of this discussion feels like there's a requirement somewhere that the home builders approve everything that's brought to you, and that's not, that's not a board where we require them to approve everything before it comes to you for a decision. I do believe that this discussion proves they have adequate opportunity to address any kind of conflicts there might be, and what they believe was presented or what they believe wasn't. But again, you guys will make whatever decision you want, but there's no need to
But there's no need to stall any decision you make today based on the fact that there's a misunderstanding with them because there's no requirement that they approve finally before something comes here.
No, I get that. I mean, I understand that. But I do believe if you attend a meeting, and in that meeting, you are told that this is, do we all agree? And is there any concerns about those numbers? And you leave that meeting and you believe that there was no difference in the, in what you, what was talked about, what was agreed upon is going to be what's presented. Because again, if there was disagreement on those numbers, I would think that discussion would happen at that Development Task Force meeting. And planning could then say, well, that number's not going to work. We're going to have to talk about this further because that number is not going to be a number that will work. That's the issue.
I think what I heard Tina say is that there's not a discrepancy on what was going to be presented. There's just, what they were told is going to be presented at this meeting on one paper. And they're bringing a second paper they were provided to say, well, look, this one doesn't match that. That's what I heard her say, but of course.
The document they were provided at the meeting we had with them is the document of the proposed fees that you saw today.
Well, can they just not show you the piece of paper that they're talking about?
They did. It's, it's what was provided in your background marked draft to show the difference between moving from a three-year plan to a four-year plan.
All right, Tony, did you have something to say? Did you want to come to the podium?
Tony Johnson, builder and developer. I think it's important to recognize that as we stand here today, the fees that are proposed for this year are fine. They will bring us up to an acceptable level so that then next year, if we have some kind of agreement and some acceptable level within three or four years, we'll be up to cost of service, Tony. We can't get there today.
Not trying to get there today, Tony. We're not trying to get there. As long as everybody is clear that these.
Exactly, precisely. That's why I'm, that's why I'm standing here.
These numbers are temporary.
This problem, if council and mayor have not recognized that this problem is ongoing, and it's a managerial issue that is causing these problems. Lack of communication, unwillingness to be, you know, at least forthcoming with information in a timely manner for us. This is, this is a chronic problem. We have been advised of changes with, in many situations, the day before. After previous agreements, previous, previous meetings. So in general, managerial problem. I mean, you folks have many, many questions about entirely other issues that staff brings up here and they're not clear about. So how can you be clear about it? And the laymen's like us out in the community, how can we be clear about it?
Mayor, I'd like to say that staff has been working with everyone in good faith. And I think that's an ongoing process for the past several years. And it's been in good faith. It's unfortunate that we get to this point and then we end up with this. Because we do want to make sure that, in working with the community, that you do have your input. And you've been given that. I think that probably a lot of information has been received from you all with our staff. So I do want to thank my staff for the good faith effort that they put forth. We do continue discounting all of this. We will get to the point, hopefully, where we can actually have the cost of service covered. We as a city cannot continue functioning that way. No business can function that way. We just need to get to the cost of service. We're not asking for a profitable level. But we will continue discounting at this point till we get to the third year. So thank you for that.
Any further questions or comments concerning the fees as presented?
So my question, Brenda, is we're good on year one.
That's right.
And we're going to see this again in a year.
Yeah.
You will not see this again in a year, per the ordinance. It currently states that staff will move it for, to the next one-third of cost of service.
And that's the confusion, see?
Well, it will be part of the budget presentation. But you won't see it as a separate fee item. So there will still be time for you to see it, review it, and discuss it. But it's during the budget process and not as a separate fee review.
So at that point, you could say yes or no to it.
To move this along, while there's parts, and I understand the passion on both sides. I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve as presented. If you're done with your presentation, to move as presented. But I would sure like to make sure that the next time we go through this, they see the exact same numbers we put on the board. And they're clear that they know this is what we're going to throw up on the board.
All I'm asking. Got to be in the quote, same page.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay. I think we've had public comment. I'm not sure we need more public comment. And with that, let's take a vote. All those in favor of approving year one of a multiple-year program that will be rediscussed at the same time during budget session next year? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 No nays, so that passes 7-0. We will now move into item G, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023 for projects. Tina, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a budget for the amount that we're pulling out of fund balance for the defeesance that you all approved a few meetings back. So putting that money into an escrow fund as required so that we can pay down that debt that you approved. Yes, ma'am, that's it.
That would be an easy, good conversation.
Move we approve. Second.
Could we debate it?
No, we should.
No.
What did you say, Daniel?
I said we should, Mayor.
Okay, I thought you said.
Everything else has been debated, so let's do it.
I thought you said, oh.
So we have a first and a second on that. We have a first and a second.
All right, and then is there public comment? With none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes 7-0. And we will now move into closed session. The executive session on the provision of government code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, chapter 551. Open Meetings, subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirement That Meetings Be Open Under The Following Sections. Section 551.087, Business Prospect Negotiations Regarding Project New Wave, Project Equipment Share, Project Monet, Project Stock Line, and, hold on. Project Poly, Project Texet, Project Aqua. And section B, 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding Property Tax, Properties Located at 7409 Nikabaka Road. We are adjourned from the regular session. We will be in executive session. And we will return when business is done. I had cried every year I left for. Moved him on out of there. All right, we are calling this meeting back to order at exactly, what time?
12:18.
At 12:18, this meeting is called back to order. And there are no announcements to be made following the executive session. So, and no board nominations, any announcements for future agenda items. I think we came up with a few during our previous discussions today. So now I'm looking for an adjournment motion.
We adjourn.
Accepted and voted on. All right.
Aye, everybody, aye.
We are out of here.